I'm going to call to order the special city council work session Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, roll call.
Schenkel.
Present.
Brown, absent. Jones?
Present.
Halkova, absent. Foley?
Present.
Wong?
Present.
All right, unfortunately tonight I do have two objections. We only received the agenda, did not get any supporting documentation, which does not give us sufficient time to review everything. And then additionally, the agenda was missing the place, which is a violation of 610-020. Teresa, would please enter that into the minutes. Onto the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second motion to approve the agenda as presented by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Schenkel, all in favor? Any opposed? Budget discussions for 25, 26.
So I have two budgets there in front of you. The only difference between both of these versions is proposed pay increases. One being a flat 3% raise across the board and then the other being the 25% of the step from the rate study that was done a few years back, just to give options there. Initially, we were also running budgets where we tried to pick, you know, primary capital improvements that we felt that was going to be needed with discussions with James. However, we decided to go ahead. We decided to go ahead and actually present, with it being just preliminary, we were presenting all requests that were made and then figured that we could use this session to discuss if we need to make any cuts rather than just James or myself making those decisions for the council. So I guess one, really what I'll do is we'll start with, I'm just going to look at the 25% CBIZ budget and then I'll just state what the difference would be with a 3% just across the board and that way you guys can see what the two look like up against each other. Everything else should be identical. So with the budget here on the summary page, again, stating that all capital improvement requests would be granted. In our general fund, we would have capital expenditures of $1,125,000 at $900. And the employment expenses, $2,503,842 rounded. With that and the transfers from the public safety fund to cover the cost of the two new buildings for police and fire. If all capital improvements were granted and we did a 25% step, 25% of the step raise, we would have a deficit budget for the year of $438,626. Again, we'll look at those capital expenditures here in just a moment. I'm just going to run down through each of the departments first and then we'll circle around to the capital expenditure page. And I guess I should also give context on how we determined the majority of our budget. In the past, we've always kind of just run a three-year average of expenditures and use that average over the three years as a starting point and then with discussions with James and then department heads, for those known discrepancies from that average, we would make our adjustments from there. As we were looking at, we started doing this with a few of our other budgeting processes where what I actually did this year is I took our current estimated income and expenditures and I multiplied that by three. I took last year's income and expenditures and multiplied that by two and then I took two years ago and just did a straight rate on that and put all those together, factor of six, divided by six to get, to put more weight on the most recent year because, you know, we know pricing changes over time and so I wanted it to be a little more weighted on the most recent activity. So that's why we kind of made that change and I just wanted to give you some context on that, on kind of where our starting point was for this process. So with that, I'll continue on. Public safety, no capital, it's just transferring money to the general fund to cover, again, the fire and police building. So revenues less expenditures, it actually has a positive ending balance of about $75,000 in that fund. Electric, again, showing a grant of all capital needs requests, it was $316,000 on a 25% CBIZ. Wages are roughly $600,000 and that department ends with about $194,000 in the positive. Oh, as we step through these, sorry, I wanted to make sure I mentioned one other thing. On this budget process here, on this preliminary budget, we, you know, we've been trying to get the water department into a better spot. Last year, we decided to waive the increase on the electric department and I think we also waived the increase on the sewer department and only made an increase to water because they are negative cash flow right now. We're proposing that we do the same thing again this year where if we make an increase that it's only in the water department to, again, lighten the burden on the citizens. The electric and sewer department are both doing well right now. I don't want to go too many years down the road without an increase because that's a recipe for disaster there as well. But with their current budgets and the way they look, I felt like this would probably be another wise decision for this year. If anybody's opposed to that, we can have discussion and I can make changes to that. But that is what you'll see in this budget here. So again, with no increase in the electric department, we're nearly $200,000 still in the black with every capital request that they made. And so now we're going to get to the water. This is a request that James had made in years past and we finally are putting it into practice where he felt that it would be beneficial for water to be able to see the water plant versus water distribution as two separate budget categories. And so we agreed to go ahead and, this year is our best to try to determine what expenditures are plant versus distribution for the budget. I think we did a 35, 65 kind of across the board for this year to try to get a baseline. And then as we have years of hard data to use, we'll make those adjustments as we go. But for budgeting purposes, we just took the water department and did a 35, 65 split to try to get to the best spot we could from not having a history of the two departments being defined. So with that, water distribution, salaries, $217,000. Their capital requests, $288,000, almost $289,000. And with transfers in from the capital expenditures fund to cover those, some of those capital needs, they have, they're in the black by about $52,000 for the year. Next page back, water plants. Again, they're with their step raise, $358,000 of employment expenses and their capital requests were $236,000. And even with the transfers in to cover capital expenditures and debt service, they're still in a deficit budget of nearly $99,000 in that department. Waste water, $299,000 of employment expenses and capital needs request, $313,000. And again, transfers from the capital improvement fund to cover those capital expenditures, it leaves them at a positive balance of 340. I'd maybe even propose, I think in the past, we have foregone the transfer from the capital improvements fund for the sewer department because they are in a better spot. If you took away that $313,000 transfer in, they would still have a positive budget for the year of, looks like $27,000 roughly. So we could also choose to forego that transfer if we want to keep some funds in that capital improvement.
If water rates go up, sewer rates go up too, correct? I mean, no?
No, what we're going to propose is just a water.
We charge sewer based on what the water rate is.
Your units, you get billed from this end, but the rates are different and we're not, he was saying we're not going to do a sewer increase now, but if that DNR thing goes through, we will do a rate increase, but it will be dictated by DNR in order for us to pay back that loan.
Correct.
We won't set the rate, DNR will tell us what to set to pay back.
Yeah. And that's something, we left that off of this budget in talking with James, we didn't think that that was actually going to come to completion before the end of this budgeting process. So that would be something that would be on next year's budget process, whatever rate increase we would have for that and those capital expenditures for that. So we did leave that off of this year's budget for that reason. So capital improvement fund, obviously there's no employees or capital needs, it's just transfers out to cover other capital needs. Again, with that $313,000 that we show as a transfer in to cover the wastewater transactions, we actually deficit budgeted by about $209,000. So if we decided to forego those transfers, we would still be in the black in that department. It does have plenty of reserves though, so if you guys chose to go ahead and help the sewer department out and make those transfers, we do have the room to go deficit if we needed to. Transportation, $294,000 on wages and $270,000 of capital needs for the year. And with that, they still are in the black by about $165,000. And then finally, economic development, doesn't really have much going on, but some rent income there, $53,000 or $5,300 for the year there. Other big items to note on this budget, in discussion with James this morning, I did get a budget sent out last week to be packets, but we did have some discussion this morning and he has heard that the county does intend to shut down the TIF this year. So we made a revision this morning for that purpose to get rid of that expenditure. And in those discussions as well, we've been told that there should, I think we have to request the money, but there's a, some money that's in reserves in that TIF that we think we're going to get roughly $900,000 coming back to the city from the TIF. And so I've put those line items in this budget as well. The revenue coming back, I have as miscellaneous revenue to the different departments. It's going to be about roughly $440,000 to the general fund, $250,000 to the capital expenditures fund for water and wastewater and $200,000 to the transportation fund. I also then took away the TIF expenditures for the year because even though we'll have three months that are still TIF months because it would be effective January 1, with them reimbursing our funds, the assumption is we're going to pay it and then they're just going to turn right back around and give it back to us. So we opted to not budget any expenditures for the TIF. So beyond that, it gets down to the detail sheets. I'll let you guys have some time to kind of look through those and let me know if there's any questions, concerns there. But also while you're looking at that, I thought I would at least run down the difference between this budget and the 3% budget. Our employment expenses in the general fund, by doing a 25% CBIZ step versus a 3% raise, it's just under $32,000 to the general fund of additional expenditures, $7,800 in electric, about $1,400 in water distribution, $1,900 in water plant, $3,500 in wastewater and about $2,600 in transportation for a grand total of $48,965. And then the other thing I want to note.
On that difference, I mean, just the ballpark, I mean, what, how's that affect the employee?
So in talking with Ashley, it's about.
We usually talk about that in closed session to discuss like individual employees.
But it's roughly, you said about 4%.
Yeah, but the overall.
That's my question, it's like 4% versus 3%?
Essentially, it's just how it gets dispersed out is different based on steps and all of that. So some people will benefit more, some people benefit less. So it depends on where your step is based on the CBIZ.
Actually, I don't think there was anybody getting less than 30% though.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ashley also gave me another report here is on the CBIZ step schedule, there are a few employees that even though they've been here for, you said someone six years.
Four years, five years, six years, but they're making the same as what we hire somebody in off the street because when we did that first CBIZ evaluation and bumped everybody up and put a bunch of people on the same step, and then we've done 25% every year, but it just rounds them to that first step is where it's rounded them to. So the other option was to try to stair step them, like the six-year employee might be on step three and the four-year employee might be on step two and a one, you know, a two-year employee might be on step one, kind of a, to fix that to where somebody's not making the same if they've been here six years as one year.
And you factor in, you know, the minimum wage increase as well.
So I don't have this built into this budget, but just to give you, the grand total difference would be about $14,000 in total. So it's not huge money, but it would maybe help some of these employees get more appropriate where they should be maybe. And I can build, I can build that into another budget here, but didn't have that one on this particular run. So with that, like I said, I'll let you guys kind of look through, oh, sorry, there is also the capital expenditure. I told you I'd circle back around to that. So should be the last two pages on your budget packets is the, every request that we got from James on what the departments are asking for their capital expenditures. And again, some of these departments will have, they have deficit budgets and so, you know, if we're wanting to get to a balanced budget on these, we may need to look to maybe have some cuts on that, so.
I will, just let me go over all these, I will, if you want to just know what they are. This here sheet that I handed James out a while ago, if you notice, it's got stars or something every side. Those are kind of half to have, pretty important things. The rest of that stuff, if you want to cut something, that'd be the place to cut.
Also during this process as well, the discussion has come up about the city hall here. This original budget, we thought we were just putting a new roof on the place and James had had some conversations with Sergeant Construction and they were estimating about $500,000. So that's what we had here, but then I know there's some further discussion that needs to happen on where we're going with city hall as well. So we can decide where we want to go with that on this budget.
I do have another question, I forgot to say anything. That, so that filter that we have paid for for that swimming pool, I have $98,000, but is that going to come out of this, I guess that'll come out this coming year, won't it? Because it ain't going to show up till the middle of, well, it'll show up the middle of this month, won't it?
If it still comes in this month, it'll still be in this fiscal year then, so, yeah.
No, it's October.
Middle of next month, whatever.
Yeah, middle of October, I think.
That's when it's going to be installed?
Yeah.
It's when the parts come in for it.
Gotcha, okay. So then I'll need to, I'll need to add that to next year's budget then it'll just be, we'll have over budgeted then for this current year and then we'll have to add that to next. What I would say to something like that is I would still feel comfortable then with a deficit budget of that amount because it was built into this year's budget, it just didn't happen. So $98,000, you said?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
I'd have to look it up, find out what it really is.
Okay.
About $90,000 or two hundred.
I was also approached by Nancy Dismuke. Her organization's trying to raise money to paint the water tower, like $60,000. She talked like they've raised 15, but said the problem she's having is when a lot of the larger donors ask her how much the city is putting toward it and she tells them nothing, they back away. She said it would really help their cause if we could even put $5,000 towards that. So I said I'd bring it up at the budget meeting and let you guys determine that. She said she felt like that would help them immensely as far as donations for that if the city had some money in the pot as well. That would just be money dedicated for that when it happened, it wouldn't be anything we'd give to them prior to that, obviously.
Honestly, we would probably just code it under repair, it wouldn't even be a capital expenditure necessarily, it's just refreshing what's already there, so we'd probably call that a repair and maintenance anyway. But yeah, we can certainly add that to that budget line item if we decide to, if you all decide that that's something you want to do.
This down here on the wastewater expenses, we put in a used jetter truck. The last one we bought, we gave just shy $100,000 for and it just didn't pan out. New ones, probably pushing, about like fire trucks are pushing a half million dollars, so.
I found one on Facebook Marketplace down in Sykesville.
He brought me a couple of them.
$167,000, it's like a 2018.
Oh yeah? Much cheaper than.
It's green, but.
I don't care what color it is.
Kind of weird color, but I don't know if it's got everything in these though either, but I mean.
That's probably one of the most important things. We've had farming come down the past couple of times to help us out.
Yeah, that'd definitely be something to look into, you're talking about $80,000 savings.
Yeah. I just put this number on here, we've got like three different trucks we've looked at, so I just know that will cover all three of them, so.
And make sure it's got everything you need.
See, that thing should have $75,000, but that's scary to me.
They dropped the price on it, now it's $150,000.
It's out of Florida. I'll go get it.
It's got 10,000 hours on it.
Alls they do is sit in idle all the time, that's what they do. It is a lot of hours.
It's a bunch of hours.
Yeah, this one's got 7500.
You just go do that one. I don't know if it's got the right kind of jet and stuff, I don't know, I mean, it's obviously vacuuming, but I don't know if it's.
Yeah, that's more of a, that's a back truck. Well, we need that too. It does both. You've got.
$44,000 miles on it.
I can't work the phone.
Looks like a back truck.
Yeah, that's just a back truck.
Didn't have a front.
It's got something on there, but it looks like another power unit.
Or maybe that's the hose on the side here, what's that?
I thought it said jetting.
I bet the hose is wrapped up right there.
Yeah, it's an orange hose.
It's just different.
Yeah, they dropped the price on it, it's $159,000.
Where's that thing located?
Sykesville. I don't know why. Some guy has got it, I don't know. It says, it says city of Des Moines or something, I don't know, it's from a city somewhere.
Doug's still in Sykesville, former administrator?
I don't know if Doug knows something about it.
Give you some info on it.
My biggest concern one, obviously, is always the general fund. The general fund is the tightest budget that we have. We're currently at a negative $438,000, $439,000 budgeted. One thing I thought I would mention as well is I've got the $500,000 for the fire truck. Also got $500,000 for a roof on this building and I, in none of these situations do I show any debt to accommodate those expenditures. So that is also an option if we don't want to spend out of reserves, there is a lease option that we can look at to balance that budget out if we determine that those are needs that have to happen, so.
It just seems to me like, whether we spend it on this existing building or we build a different building or buy a different building, the cost is still going to be there.
Oh yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The fire truck, I mean, that could probably wait, I would think. Kevin, you're on the fire department?
Yeah, I really don't know. I asked John to maybe come and sit in this tonight, I don't know if he's busy, but I don't really know anything about what he's asking for. I mean, we just did a lot of repairs to the other truck, it's aging. I think it's just more of a trying to get something on the books for one, I guess.
And we usually have one on the books a year or two before we actually move forward on it, but you know, he likes to let us know that it's coming up. So we're definitely going to have to address our city hall facility, whether we fix this, build another one, buy another one.
Yeah.
We got to have a place to work out of, we can't, we can't stay down at the firehouse permanently.
Right. And that's where, again, from this, my current budgeting standpoint, I have no idea where we're headed with that, so that's why I just, okay, I at least had a bid for a new roof, fixing that hole.
Sure.
So that's where I went with that 500, but yeah, if we end up building a building, obviously we're going to be spending more than 500, so that's a bit of an unknown still at this point, so.
What if we sold property that we currently have?
Sure, we can absolutely do that and apply that towards it.
So yeah, well, that's not in this budget, selling that.
Right.
Really, so, yeah.
That's my point.
Yeah, those are some things that I.
That could help offset a cost possibly.
Offset substantially, really, so.
Yeah.
Wish somebody'd just give us a million dollars for this place. Sold.
I'll put a sign on the light bulb tomorrow.
Of course, they'll light on her.
It's in the window.
It's in right now.
As it is, yeah, as it is.
You're right.
Do you see where it had hours on that anywhere?
No, I was trying to find it.
Does it, does it got a, it says jet.
It is, it's a jetter.
It's back on the side instead of the front.
Oh, I see it cold up there, I just see the control panel.
Oh, and I see it cold up there. I just see the control panel thing. I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, on the front.
Put our hose on the front of ours?
Mm-hmm. That's where most of them at. I bet that one comes out the front too. I bet it's just running through it too.
The only thing about the Camel branded one, you know, I've never really.
What brand was it?
Camel, Camel.
Vector or Backcon, that's what everybody ever talks about.
That's what I heard about.
Why is it tornadoes?
Camp.
James, one other thing that just hit me while I'm sitting here. The airport, do we still have any matching funds from the state that we?
Yeah, we do. That's, that ten thousand I put in there, that, that is our match to the engineering for the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was gonna be like, I think we're ten percent. We had, I think we've used all that free stuff from the COVID.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, okay. So we got, we have sixty down on this for the fuel system engineering.
Uh, I think this year I only was gonna put ten on it. Did I put sixty on there?
Yeah.
You better leave it long for now.
Okay.
Let me check.
So are we moving to, you said we used all the hundred percent. What's, what's our next? Is it?
I think it's ten percent.
Ten percent match?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And I think we's gonna break that up into two projects. Like this coming year, we would do the engineering and all that for, for the whole system. And then the next year, they would actually do the work, so.
So that would actually add, let me, let me see, fifty-four thousand to grant income for the wa, for the airport.
Yeah, I had sixty on my paper too, but I think it's, I think it's just ten.
Oh, she knocked it, your, your report shows sixty. She knocked it down to ten, so she's showing the offset there.
I don't know if we've discussed it before, but this whole five million dollars with the mines, where are we at on that anywhere? Is it just going?
So that might be we're not getting, but I did get an email from, so we, so I applied for two grants for this project. We applied for the DNR SRF loan, but then I also applied for a ERA CDA, well, CDA grant that's five hundred thousand dollars of cheap five hundred thousand dollars. They asked for more information. They wanted an update on our SRF situation, so I talked to DNR today and I got an email back from her that said that as of right now, they have stored and reviewed it and that it is set to be approved at their October eighth meeting. So obviously that could change depending to October three, but as of right now, we should be getting that. That's two million in grant.
That's the SRF grant? Good job.
Three and a half billion in the low interest rate loan. But that five hundred thousand from CDA, if we get it, we can stack it on top of that DNR one, so we have two and a half billion in grant funds and three million in loans.
And that could be put toward sewer.
It all goes towards that sewer main project.
Sewer main project.
And again, and that's all stuff that we don't expect to be finalized in this next fiscal year.
Right.
Right.
I, I think the grants themselves will be like, I think we'll know that we're gonna get the grants in the next fiscal year, but I don't know. I don't know how far we will get into money coming in and money going out.
Gotcha. So we'll need to add that to this budget then. You said you think we'll potentially have three million in loan?
Possibly three million in grant and three million in loans, but it could be two and a half, no, I'm sorry. Two and a half million in grant and three million in loans, because it's five and a half million total.
Okay.
A little work out of that.
Mm-hmm.
Been a long awaited project too.
So I feel like we've been working on this for twelve years.
But yeah, basically like since I got on here is when this is all.
Phil Thomas would be proud of it.
Yeah, as I said, I just talked about that the other day. That's the last thing he told me last time I saw him. He's like, you better get that done before I get too old or pass away or something. I'm like, well, we're still working on it, so.
It's big job.
Yeah, that's pretty promising, the SRF stuff.
I told you today, I didn't want to get my hopes up too much.
So is there anything we currently need to address concerning the budget as we've discussed it?
So to me, the big thing is, is what kind of raises, what we're gonna do with employment. And then the other big thing is what kind of, are we gonna grant all capital or are we gonna make some cuts there? Those are my two big items to try to get determined here this evening.
What about health insurance?
Yeah, we were here back on.
We had, I think we built in a ten and a half percent rate, or increase on that.
Ten and a half percent on insurance?
You're, you're my friend.
Oh, is it, you did finally get a?
They said eight conservative, but that's not true. We won't know until January.
Gotcha, yeah.
She said eight, eight and a half percent.
Eight conservative, that means there'll be at least eight.
Right. It's, it's most likely will.
We've done really good past few years.
Yeah, yeah.
Do a lot of our employees have our insurance?
We have about thirty-five or forty that do, and it's really good on those insurance. On the water ton, which, which one did you guys put in the, I think we usually do like three cents, five cents?
We did ten cents.
Ten cents again, that's what I wanted to hear.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that. Yeah, I think if we remember.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, that's, that's what we went with. Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
On the C biz thing, so we, so this, this is what I'm looking at here, you know, it's twenty-five percent. I mean, you know, the original, when we originally got that study, I mean, how are we, are we ever close to actually getting what they recommended? Are we still pretty?
I think we're pretty far off.
I have, when we go into closed session, I have each individual employee what's, what they're at and where they, where they're at and where they should be and how far they are away from their step.
Okay. Yeah, I was just kinda curious coming in. I know it was the thing we got that. We're like, really wanting to make some progress, because every year it's just like, seems tougher, it seems like.
So you said we need to address, one, capital improvements, correct?
Yes.
And that's what this is, right, James? You said the little diamond logos, what is absolutely necessary?
Yeah, it really is. The first one, roof repair, we don't have fluid oil, we're gonna do there, but.
But if we, I mean, we're either, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah. Trash cans. The only thing, I never know about them two foam filled tires. I think I'm gonna make it every year and it never pans out, so I just put them in there. Dumpsters, trash carts and motor tires, that's about a given. Fences, jetter truck, that's really needed somewhere or another. That contracted labor, that is, on the electric department, that contracted labor is, I believe that is those guys to come and puts his transmission line back up. They bought all these poles down here a couple of years that's laying down here in part. I think that's for them to come and put all the transmission lines back up in the cap ace of. The west tank, we actually had budgeted to do this year and didn't get it done, or the east tank, get it sandblasted and repainted.
That's expensive.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Then you're talking about sixty-five thousand to paint the old water towers. There's no way left there.
They're not sandblasting it though.
Well, that's true.
Afraid it'll.
This is inside.
Afraid it'll fall down.
Might be both actually, inside now.
Okay, well, that makes more sense then.
Sandblast the other one. It's low, it'll fall down.
Yeah, don't do that.
That barrel containment thing, I mean, it ain't much, but that's a kind of a DNR deal. They gotta have some kind of, right now, they're just sitting on scales. There's no containment, so if one thing breaks open, it's just out and open, so.
Yeah, I would think we, of course, I don't know, but the tanker truck, we might be able to put off till next year. Five hundred thousand. I haven't talked to John. I don't know how bad a shape he's in.
I, yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just go over since what the conversation you did have with me, now I'm seeing what this is. It is actually a pumper tanker, both. I'm assuming this would replace eight fifty, which is the one that we did most of the repairs to, we bought for like the thirty-five thousand dollar truck that we got a few years ago to get us by. And, you know, I'm guessing that's what his plan would be, is to just completely get rid of that, that truck at that point. But this, the big change with this, it does carry a lot of water compared to anything we've never, since I've been on, we've never had a truck that carried two thousand gallons of water, so that's a plus. But, I mean, truck prices are, I'm surprised he's able to find something for five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's pretty, pretty cheap in the fire truck world. So it's kind of surprising to me that you can get that.
And I'm, I'm sure he's, you know, after the big battery fire, you know, where there weren't any hydrants, I'm sure he's looking at that.
Yeah.
Anything, anything.
Yeah, we get that all over town at this point where there's places in town where you don't have water supplied, but, I mean, I don't know.
It's just supplying water, hauling water?
Yeah, well, this is, yeah, this will pump too, so you can't hook it to a hydrant, or you can just haul water with it, but. You know, I don't know, I just, again, I'm not trying to fight for something, but at the same time, it's, you know, I don't know how long the other truck will. I mean, if it doesn't happen this year, I mean, I would say, I would, I would think that within the next two to three years, we're gonna have to do something, you know? I mean, the last truck we bought was, the new truck that we bought was to two thousand nine, so.
If it wasn't for the trouble we're having here, it would be a little different, but we're gonna have to spend probably that much and maybe more.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
To get our city hall back together, so if he thinks he could wait till next budget year, that would be, that would be my target area for this time.
Yeah, no, that's, we definitely have a lot of unknowns with what's going on in this building right now, so.
Well, and he, uh, when he does decide to, he can put together some kind of presentation about it, just on it on paper.
Yeah, I just, kinda surprised that.
Well, like I said, last time, I think last time we did a major, well, two times ago, a major purchase in the fire truck department. We, we took on a lease to do it, to spread that cost over some years. It's an option.
That's what I was wondering, about a jetter truck, lease one rather than purchase it, or lease on or.
Like I said, that stuff with the diamond on it, it's a, that's pretty much it, gotta have stuff every year. And stuff like Eric put in for police cars, ammo, pretty much every year deal too. Trying to find it here. Water distribution, Tracy had put in, which is a bunch, but two hundred twelve thousand to connect that eight inch main that's on. I wrote this here and I don't want to ruin it. I think from college, the one that runs up Marshall Street, I think that's what he's talking about. They, they put that line in years ago next to a two inch and they didn't connect the houses. So there's, every time they have a break, they go back and they connect it to the eight inch. I think that's the project he's talking about.
What's leaking up, what's leaking up there?
That's what it is. It's that old two inch line. What I always heard was when they put that eight inch in there, the city would not pay to have the connections done and the property owners wouldn't either. So they put an eight inch line in there and had one house hooked to it.
That's pretty necessary to get that done. My mind, that's us.
Someday, eventually it'll have to happen, that old two inch finally give up.
Yeah, that's a probably.
It's leaking in that one spot. It's been leaking more.
Been like that for, I mean, it ain't raining a month now. It's still got water coming out of it, so.
Yeah.
I would argue on the police vehicles too. I, most cities I work with or have worked with in the past, we always had at least one vehicle on every year. I was just asking Eric, you know, how many, how many vehicles you have in the fleet? It's ten to twelve vehicles. You know, you figure if you're not at least replacing one every year, you gotta have them on a cycle. Ten or twelve years older, you're getting repair issues and stuff like that, so.
And we, we may possibly be able to save, I don't know, seventy-five, a hundred thousand on that jetter truck if any of these would pan out, I mean, from the sounds of it.
You're gonna bind one with a lot of hours on it. You're just.
Yeah, I think that's what we done first time, I think.
I found seven thousand, seventy, seventy-two hundred hours on that one I just showed you, so that's why it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so.
I know this, something else I probably shouldn't have put a mark beside was that regulator for the downtown sub. Jeff was wanting to get that thing replaced and rebuilt. The one that's there is working, but I, I think if it goes bad, then we got problems.
Yeah, we don't want any more, we don't want any more risks on that, so.
I mean, it's just sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Sixty, yes.
There aren't many other options, really.
No, seed fertilizer, that's, that's a given. And it ain't costed about half that the past couple of years or so.
That pavilion at City Lake, is that to re, is that a new one or is that to repair the one that's out there?
Yeah, that's the one that got messed up.
Oh.
I think that's to rebuild the one that got blew away down at the end.
Gotcha.
We're gonna have to put a, a new roof and stuff on that other one. It's getting pretty bad shape.
Those hide, on the water distribution, those hydrant replacements, how many do you think that's gonna cover?
Six.
Really?
Yeah. Thanks when he had figured about ten thousand a piece.
That's a B.
I think that's, and that's because they gotta come in and do that hydro stop on them and all that, so.
It's a nice thing they can replace some of those for sure, so.
Make sure them ones over in the mining traveses work if we ain't gonna buy this other fire truck to pump water. Don't want them to be able to hook to a working hydrant. We'll have to pump out that creek there at the health department.
They can always call Turkey Pass. They got tankers.
Yeah, that's a.
That's what I was thinking about the tanker. They show up anyway, regular tanker.
That, that has been a big help and then come up, that's really, that has been a big benefit of.
How many gallons that thing hold?
Uh, well, I, I think they've got some under two and three thousand gallons, I think.
That one's pretty big.
Yeah, that's, that's what's been nice here lately, you know, especially when we had the other one down for a while, at least we could get some water that way, so.
Put that eighteen in there for that zero turn mower. We really don't need one right now, but we ain't having very good luck with them. We tried the brand we bought, trying to save a little money. I just, I think we've spent more money in parts now than we should have just bought the ones we was getting.
What brand did you buy?
Uh, Bad Boy. Bad Boy, yeah. I got one at home. My dad's got one. Take the great.
Oh, yeah, but it's not used every day.
Yeah, that's the difference. That's the difference.
Yeah. And you don't drive yours all over town and mowing the grasses? Maybe that's why yours lasted.
We have got a Kubota downstairs. As far as I know, this year, we fixed it for the first time. Had to put a gearbox in there.
Is that what this eighteen thousand would get, another Kubota?
Yeah.
That's probably around to get on. Can you buy a diesel Kubota for eighteen?
Yeah, but I don't even know that we want a diesel.
Well, for as much time as it spends on the road, it probably diesel gets you better mileage. When you're driving it all over town, the motors are where, where the gas engines are, so. They got a hundred hours and ten thousand miles on them.
They sent the tires worth going through the blade.
Yeah. Outseating ain't too crazy in here except for that water tanker, really.
And doing the skid steer, be able to, be able to kind of move that around or whatever and get?
That was our plan. Jeff was gonna buy a new one. The street guys was taking his, landfill was taking theirs, and then they're just gonna keep the old tire machine.
Yeah.
Yard dog or something, but.
I still think that's something that pretty necessary to have one of those or a good one.
That is no doubt probably the most used machine in the city.
Yep.
What's the electric department use those on mostly?
I have a cutter on the front.
Oh. They're pretty, not bad.
But it is. Got it down.
Tilt bed, tilt bed trailer would be nice too, if you find one of those.
We didn't pull out with a pickup, right?
Yeah, that's our whole plan.
Yeah.
Actually, and it ain't go, I just stole that number on there, but Kevin's got, Kevin's got one. We just need one a little bit heavier than the one he's got.
He can probably save, probably save four thousand dollars on that going down Sykesville and getting one where they built it down there.
You need to have, you don't have to tie a dump or pull around with a dump truck.
Yeah, we can semi have time for a skid steer, so.
Yeah.
So would that, if we did remove the tanker, would that balance our budget?
Yes.
Then we've got to have a balanced budget whether we do that or something else.
Does it, yeah. Yeah. And then again, you know, with it, with the current tanker being an older one, in the event of a, an emergent, we want to avoid the emergency situations. We like to be better prepared for replacement items, but, uh, in the event of an emergency situation where you have to buy one, you know, again, I would probably propose that we move to, um, a lease payoff gradually to help save the budget as well.
Few years ago, we done, uh, what did we do, a lease and bought like three different things all at one time?
Uh, it was, it was, there were about six or seven different departments involved in two, we had two leases, a five year and a seven year lease through US Bank. And we just had a whole laundry list of needs, and they were true needs, and we didn't have the budget room to do it, so we, we used, uh, a seven year and a five year lease through US Bank at that time to, to make that happen.
Reason I ask is because, uh, would it be possible, not this year, but maybe next year, I might start looking into another trash truck again and roll one of them before it becomes peace. And, um, maybe we can put the two of them together, so.
I got nothing else.
So I'll, I'll strike the.
Is that okay with everybody?
Just don't tear our tanker up, Kevin.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take it easy on our front, so.
Same time, we moved into his firehouse, now we're nixing his fire truck.
That's good to hear. Tenth times down there, so.
You think you're going to convert one of the garages in the new city hall?
Oh, uh, I guess one note real quick. Like I said, with the pool filter coming in next fiscal year, it will still show a slight deficit budget, but it's due to transactions that didn't happen this year, so it, it would be an expected deficit on that, that situation, so. Thought I should be fully transparent on that.
All right, um, do you, do you have one closed session personnel matter on the agenda this evening? Do I have a motion to go to closed session for a personnel matter?
So moved. Second.
Motion to go to closed session about Lottman Schenkel, second about Lottman Jones. Roll call.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Brown, Zabson, Jones.
Aye.
Huckabee, Zabson, Foley.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.